I would now like to call this September 6th, 2022 Longmont City Council Study Session to Order. As a reminder, this meeting can be viewed on the livestream at www-longmontcolorado.gov. And to view that, go to longmontcolorado.gov and the city's YouTube channel at www-longmontpublicmedia.org. You can also watch it on Comcast Channels 8 or 880. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Peck.
Present.
Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring. Councilmember Martin.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Waters.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Mayor Yevakor.
Thank you. Counselor Hidalgo Ferring is absent tonight.
The pledge.
Yep. Let's stand for the pledge.
Thank you, Don. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any motions to direct the city manager to put items on future agendas? Seeing none, we'll go directly to the public invited to be heard. You have three minutes to speak. Please list your name and address when you come up. The first one on the list is Buzz Feldman.
My name's Buzz Feldman. I live at 3135 Lake Parkway. I'm here tonight to talk to you about pickleball. I was here a few weeks ago, talking a bit about it. And it's a new sport. It is new in the country. So I wanted to update you, and new in Longmont, I wanted to update you on some recent developments. It's the fastest-growing sport in the country and also here in Longmont. Estimates are that there are currently more than 1,800 participants of the sport here in Longmont, and that's growing daily. Last month, the Longmont Pickleball Club became a member-supported organization. We have, in just three short weeks, have more than 200 dues-paying members actively supporting pickleball in Longmont. Longmont Pickleball Club is conducting many events within the city. We give free lessons every week for members. We give numerous, we have numerous open play days when anybody can show up and play. We are, the planning process for tournaments for next month, and we have social events planned for the near future also. Pickleball has a stigma that it's an old-person sport, and it isn't. Elementary schools in town are very interested in adding it to their physical education curriculum this fall, and Longmont Pickleball Club is helping to facilitate that. A little about what it takes. Courts for pickleball are the same size as badminton courts, so quite a bit smaller than tennis courts. In the space of two tennis courts, we can fit six to eight pickleball courts, so we can get a lot more people playing the sport and being active. And I'm not advocating for removal of any tennis courts. Currently, we only have six permanent pickleball courts in Longmont. Of course, they're dedicated specifically to pickleball with permanent nets for about 1,800 players. We also have eight shared-use courts that are shared with tennis and also roller hockey. There are six other courts that require the use of portable nets to be put up and then taken down after play is finished, because the city just doesn't have the funding to create permanent dedicated courts. So what I'm here for is to ask you to consider, as you come, talk about your budget for the coming year, to consider funding permanent dedicated pickleball courts. The info on the cost, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Buzz. The next person is Jamie Simo.
Jamie Simo, 501-7 Independence Drive. Good evening. I'm here tonight representing Stan with our St. Brain Creek, a citizen action group dedicated to protecting Longmont's riparian areas and the wildlife that lives there. As you know, our current priority is protecting the nesting bank swallows at Rogers Grove. As we mentioned when we spoke with you last month, we have been collecting postcards signed by residents who have asked that you protect our threatened bank swallow colony as flood mitigation within the overreach of the St. Brain corridor proceeds. Tonight, we have 485 postcards to present to Mayor Peck. People care about our natural areas and wildlife and want to see them respected and protected. These postcards, titled SOS, Save Our Swallows, read, "Rogers Grove Nature Area is home to one of the only known nesting bank swallow colonies in Boulder County and is the site of the only colony on Longmont protected lands. Bank swallows nest in riverbanks with a very specific soil type and slope. Due to habitat loss, they are a rare and declining species and are noted as being a species of special concern in Longmont's Wildlife Management Plan. The favorite option for Longmont's flood mitigation project in the vicinity of Rogers Grove will almost certainly wipe out this rare nesting habitat. Therefore, I ask, before flood mitigation proceeds in this area, city staff come up with a plan to protect the bank swallow colony. Stan's supporters are pleased and encouraged by the city's expressed commitment to restoring this habitat and by a recent follow-up meeting slash discussion we had with Natural Resources. Time will tell, but at this time, things seem to be progressing well. Thank you for listening to your constituents."
Thank you, Jamie. Lance Whitaker.
My name's Lance Whitaker. I live at 1750 Collier Street here in Longmont, Colorado. Been a resident for 40 years and like to remind Mayor and Council today is Coffee Flavored Ice Cream Day. So everybody enjoy coffee-flavored ice cream today. I also would like to address a couple of issues on Keystone Park. I heard you guys talking in the budget that you already had, 150,000 budgeted for that park. And to make Keystone Park a safer place, I feel that the city should consider filling in the gap over on Sixth Avenue so that the police can properly patrol that area. Also, there's a lighting issue in that park, so if you could maybe figure out some lighting in that park. Also, there is no access to parking in that park. And then if you put some access or found a way to access that park from Ninth Avenue and put in some parking in the back of the parking, that maybe that might be an idea. And for future, I would love to see you guys make it a small bike park to where kids who have uncertainty on bikes can learn the rules of the road and also maybe become more familiar in a safe environment. And because that's more or less a park for flood mitigation, more than playgrounds, you know, you wouldn't run the risk of destroying any of the playworks or whatever if we just put in a whole bunch of small bike paths. And, you know, like fun little activities for, you know, kids to find certain paths and find, you know, emblems or whatever on the sidewalk in that area. So just some solutions that you may want to consider. I thank you for your time, and remember, coffee-flavored ice cream for all. Thank you. You have a nice day.
Thank you, Lance. So is there anybody in the public that would like to come up and comment? One more? Come on up. State your name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
My name is Ryan Forbes, and I'm at 303 Kaufman. And I'd like to say that, you know, Longmont is home of a fiber ring, and, you know, you have, you guys are talking about planning a, you know, the sound regulations to keep track of, you know, where, you know, you can track noise pollution and be one of the first places in the country to really track that and do it, at least on this side of the country. And we're also home to, like, one of the biggest community maker spaces in the U.S. as well. And I know all of that because of Longmont Public Media, and I think it's a valuable resource. I go there and I produce my own content. I make my, I have a podcast that I wouldn't be able to do otherwise. And I've met people out from the community because, because of Longmont Public Media, and I just wanted to come here today and just say what a value it is to me to have that maker space and to be able to use it. And also that I feel that it is, it's also one of the things that makes Longmont one of a kind, to have like a media maker space where people can go, can go in basically all week long and just make their own content, have access to a studio, have access to a place where they can actually make videos and actually put it up on TV and put it up on, online. There's not a lot of places, I've never heard of that anywhere else until I came here. And I would have never even thought to look for it, even when I was trying to set up my own podcasts and my own content before knowing about Longmont Public Media. And because of that, not only do I have a voice, but there's people in the community that do. And there's also, like, my, the friend I do the podcast with, he, he wouldn't be able to otherwise. And there's, there's also, there's voices I would have never heard of. My God, I've recently, like, learned about finances and things like that from, from there as well. And I just wanted to come today and say that I think that's a great, it helps make Longmont unique. I think it's incredibly valuable, and I just wanted to show my support here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'm going to close. Public invited to be heard. And now the next thing on our agenda tonight is special reports. Do we have any special reports, Don? And no presentation. So we're going to go on to our study session items, which is the 2023 Budget Discussion. Our Finance Officer, Jim Golden.
Mayor, Council, we are going to, and I can't read this. Is it this one, Jim?
We're going to start out with compensation, so I have Gina join us.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hit that one. There you go.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. I've seen you a couple times. Gina Parino, Benefits and Compensation Manager for the city. And tonight, I am going to present the compensation piece of the 2023 budget. First off, just a couple of things. Our compensation philosophy, the city's compensation philosophy states that the city will try to pay competitive and prevailing market rates. In 2017, as previously discussed with council, the philosophy began, the city began moving towards the philosophy of paying at 102% of market. Unfortunately, at this point in time, we have not been able to actually afford that, so we have not made that goal yet. The philosophies that we applied to 2023 were, we were able to use benchmarks for the positions, whether they be from a survey or internal studies. All ranges, we have moved by at least 6% as a minimum, and they have stopped at a maximum of 12%. We are recommending to continue to pay at 101% of market in 2023, and the exceptional pay budget is going to continue for employees that exceed exceptional service. Some special position recommendations for our collectively bargained or CBA positions. Step positions increase for police is going to be 4%. The FOP open range increases will be 6%, and fire step progression is also 4%, and those are their negotiated rates within their contract. LPC step positions will increase a minimum of 6%. The benefits for 2023, this is actually a really great year for benefits, as we saw flat renewals for both our dental insurance and our EAP provider, and we actually received a 4.61% rate decrease for our medical insurance through Kaiser. So we actually got a savings on our benefits this year. No other plans renewed, so we will be looking at the rest of the plans starting in 2024 when they come due. I can also report that for 2024, Kaiser has given us a rate cap of no more than 5% of an increase, and we've actually received a two-year rate cap for Delta Dental for 2024 and '25 for a 5% rate cap, so we can receive no more than that. So it was a really great year for the city's benefits. We saw some great savings and some great flat renewals there. As far as future direction, I think the big thing that's unique this year is the compensation study that we have on the horizon. And I would like to give council a little bit of history on kind of where we started with that and where we're at today. So one thing we started realizing pretty early on was that we weren't competitive, and the data that we were using was not sufficient for things such as underreporting. We saw a lot of cities similar to the size of Longmont that were no longer reporting, which was causing problems with getting actual reputable market for our positions. So when we started looking into doing the compensation study, we put out an RFP and we received some responses which we went through. The one thing that was really common amongst all these responses is that they came from smaller companies that provided a very cookie-cutter approach to doing a compensation study. They used one specific type of data, and you basically got a delivered product out of the box. There wasn't a lot of room for changes or for making it specific to the city or really trying to gather what we needed. So in looking at that and realizing we just weren't getting what we wanted and also realizing that we absolutely were not competitive with our cities around us, which we're losing employees to, we reached out and ended up contracting with Mercer, who's one of the big three. There's three large companies that do compensation studies, and Mercer is one of them. So what we're getting from Mercer is not only a look at the city's compensation, in essence, a deep dive of where we're at with our positions and the fact that we're actually going to be paying at market value and be leading the market as opposed to trying to catch up, which is where we've been using insufficient data. The second thing we're going to be able to do with Mercer is we're going to be able to look at what does the future look like? How do we stay competitive in the future, not only with our compensation, but really the question, what does the benefits package of the future look like? What, you know, what is total rewards going to be? It's no longer just health, dental, and vision that is driving people, and what are we doing to retain people, and what does that look like going forward? So Mercer is going to be able to give us all of those things and provide a great tool for the city going forward to be competitive, not only in retaining our staff, but also attracting really good quality applicants to come in. So some specific things that we're looking for with the compensation study is we would like them to review our approved pay plan that we use today and provide recommendations that they feel would better track market, that they feel would be better, and also track market competitiveness. You know, what are we doing now? Is it still sufficient? Do we need to look at a different, a different pay plan? Secondly, we want them to conduct a total compensation study utilizing reputable and reliable comprehensive data, which means actually going out to the market and using large-scale surveys that, you know, we know that we have similar-sized organizations reporting into, so that we know that we're actually getting competitive data and not comparing to smaller towns or in some cases, all counties. Third, we want them to analyze data received to determine how our salary should be adjusted to achieve the market competitiveness that we're actually looking for and to make those recommendations going forward so that we can look at staying where we want to be in this current marketplace. This is a unique year for compensation. I think the market is moving faster this year than I have ever seen it in the 20 years that I've been in human resources. It's literally moving so fast that we have had comp providers from large places say, hold on tight, we don't know where this is going to end. So it's definitely been unique. This is, this is something that I think not a lot of people have seen possibly since '93. In looking at the employee benefits, we want them to review our total rewards package now and include recommendations for ancillary benefits or other additional employee benefits that maybe we're not offering. You know, maybe it's something we haven't thought of. You know, what are other municipalities doing to attract staff? You know, what is their engagement look like? We also are going to have them review our leave plans. Currently, we'll have them look at the amounts of leave and design of the plans and also evaluate a benefit for a parental leave program as to whether or not that would be a benefit to the city employees. 102% definitely remains our goal, and hopefully we will be able to get there, to pay at 102% of market. That was a lot of information in a short amount of time.
Do we have any questions or discussion from counselors on this presentation? Counselor Waters.
Let me first check. Are we going to get more? Is this the sum total of what we'll get on compensation? From this, we're going to move on to something else?
Yes, sir.
So this would be the time for anything compensation-related?
Yes.
So, so I do have a few questions. Maybe just a general observation, just kind of queuing on your last observations about... Maybe just a general observation, just kind of queuing on your last observations about what we'll get from this compensation study. What kind of, what resonates as I, as I listen to how we'll think about positions and what are the kind of rewards, is the, the other side of that is value, both, both to the employees and to the organization. So I hope in the compensation study, that as we're looking at positions and they're going to be, however we classify them and think about compensating them, part of that, part of the equation or the algorithm or the, I don't know, it's a metric, is the value that a, a position adds to the city's mission. We got 1,000 great people doing great work, I don't question that. Not every position at every level adds the same value. And I understand there is a relationship between value and compensation, right? But compensation doesn't always reflect value. And so I think that's just going to be an important part of this. If I'm in this, I'll be in the conversation a year from now as we go through this, so I'm going to be really curious about that part of this. Can I go on with, with a relationship between what we do with compensation and the workplace and workforce of the future study? I think the first, I don't know, back in December, maybe it was the first meeting in December, Joanne was sharing with us the work you were doing on a work, the workplace of the future, and I think slash workforce of the future. We've not heard anything about that since. So when we, as we are looking at compensation for 2023, I can't think about recommendations here without under, without reflecting going, huh, what have we learned in the last 11 months or 10 months, however long it's been, about what we're, what we've asked our staff and others, I assume we might be going outside the organization as well, about, about what the work, what to expect, what to envision as a workplace of the future? About the workforce of the future and how what we're doing tonight or will do as we approve this budget reflects the status of that work. I understand it's not finished, but this ought to reflect something that we've learned. Could you connect, the, the philosophy long-term has been to get to 102%? I've been supportive of that, I, you know, but to some degree, that, that 102% ought to be informed as well, or whatever, wherever we end up, by what we've learned about the work so far and where it's headed, and this relationship between compensation, reclassification, which we saw in the enclosure, and with the workplace of the future. And I don't mean that as a setup, I just, we haven't heard anything since, and that's the context for understanding what this recommendation helps to advance, I think.
I think there'll be a few of us to jump in on some of this.
Could I add one more, and then I'll be quiet? Somewhere in all of that conversation, workforce of the future, compensation, et cetera, accountability is the overlay, right? And what does accountability specifically, because if we're going to compensate, we're compensating based on value-add, based, and there's an accountability, what does accountability look like? As we envision at this point, in the, in the workplace of the future, and how does, does compensation measure up against what we're expecting and how we're going to measure what we see in terms of measures of value-added, right, on the part of the individual and, and work, work unit contribution? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. So we'll start off with the value add, or we'll start with the parameters for this. So obviously, in terms of exceptional pay, we have that built in for those that are nominated by their supervisors or their coworkers for exceptional pay. I think what we do is when we say market, and, and we're going to compensate you at market, you, you have to be performing and meeting your expectations. And so the reality is, is that if you're not performing or you have issues, the supervisors actually have the ability to say, we're not going to put you at 101% of market, we're going to put you here. So if you're on a PDP, which is professional development plan, then you're not eligible for that market salary. Or if there are issues that we had during the year, then when we review it, and we, because of all the new regulations and laws, we're doing multiple reviews on this, and so we have to do equity checks, we have to make sure that we're not only consistent among the departments, that we're consistent organizationally. And so when we go in and review the exceptional pay, the final review goes to Joanne and myself, and we sit down and meet with all the directors. We have the same review on those that are, it's the same spreadsheet where we see he's getting moved up to market. And to give you a sense, there have been times in the review process where we've seen someone that may not have been exceptional pay that we go, well, what about this person? There's been times we've seen people that were moved to market, and we said, didn't this person have an issue during the year? And we had to push it back. So there is that accountability piece in that you have to be performing your job and meeting expectations to move to market. I don't know if that answers your question.
To some degree. That would be, that, that would be the, the link between compensation and whether or not somebody's fulfilling everything in their job description and if they've had an issue and, and whether or not there's some threshold, right, that, that, that people pass to get to 102%. For me, I'd be more, really, the real question is, what are those thresholds? Not for holding people back, but, but how do we approach, what do, what do we, what do you see, or what do you expect to see in the, in the interest of accountability if somebody's going to go to 102% or wherever we're going to end up with this? What do they, what do they bring? Where do they start? And what do they bring to the supervisor to say, I killed it this year, and I, and I ought to be eligible for that, right? Not catching them something, doing wrong, catching them doing something wrong, catching them doing something right, right? In terms of what their aspirations were going into the year.
So Joanne can go over the part of the criteria. I don't have the form in front of me, but, you know, one of the things that we built into this, and this was really born out of the work that the organization put together, not me, not my leadership team, the organization, and that, you know, the first threshold you have to meet is really living or cultural attributes that we want as an organization. You can produce, and you can produce something big, but if you're not living those attributes, which are really embodying creativity, teamwork, there's a list of them. You can do great things, but if you're not doing this, then you haven't met the baseline criteria. So it's really identifying those that are living the cultural attributes that we want. That's the first piece. Joanne, what are the rest of the pieces? I'm drawing a blank.
Mayor Peck, Councilmember Waters, the additional things we would do once somebody's met those cultural attributes, are they working on a very large project that is really adding value to the organization? Or are they adding value in their everyday work? So you may have somebody that works in a department and doesn't have a large project, but they're really adding value on a daily basis. So we've seen some departments where we've gotten commendations from residents, you know, over and over about the same employee. That's going to be somebody that we want to recognize as well within that exceptional pay program.
And it's evolved to teams too, because we know we had issues where it was hard to distinguish one person versus a team, so you can nominate teams. You know, we, we really let people, the only thing I don't want is where you just unilaterally give everyone a 2% increase to utilize a 2%. We've allowed that, though, on a couple of occasions. And one that I'll use as an example that came before me was actually when we converted our fleet into a new building. And Bruce came and he said, I can't distinguish on this because here's the work that we did. And when he laid it out, what you really saw was a team initiative, and we're like, okay, we can do it in this case. Thank you, Jim.
It pays to have Jim sitting right there next to you.
Yeah, exactly. So we have outstanding achievement on the job, extraordinary effort to complete a job or handle a heavier-than-normal workload, volunteering for and/or working on special projects, performing extra duties beyond those normally assigned, exceptional contributions toward the effectiveness and efficiency of operations, actions that contribute to the maximum utilization of departmental resources such as use and implementing of technology, information, resources, work practices, standard operating procedures or equipment that achieves more efficient and effective operations, making or implementing creative suggestions at the same time that save time or money. We then go in outstanding service to direct team members, other city employees, residents, and/or diverse populations, doing things for others that are far beyond job requirements, performing in an exceptionally courteous and cooperative manner, particularly in the face of difficult, of difficult citizen or coworker operations, taking responsibility for promoting team success, assessing whenever needed or requested, making a special effort to recognize excellence in other team members, valuing differences among other team members.
An extensive list, yeah. Am I the only one who is interested in the relationship between these recommendations and the workplace of the future? I, I can follow up with Joanne if I'm the only one.
I'm interested in it, but I'm wondering if we would get more of that information as we go on, as to how that relates. Is there anything more in this presentation that we're going to be getting that would relate to that?
This was just focusing on the compensation. Are we doing that on the 20th or 13th? The HR? Next week. Are we, we can include some of that next week in the HR. What I will tell you, there's some, there are some things that we've enacted that didn't, that were in our administrative regulation. So one that we recently worked through was callback pay. That was a significant issue for folks in the sense that how we were compensating folks on callback. And Joanne, what did we adjust there?
So in that particular case, we added hours, so we are compensation, compensating for more hours as a baseline for those callbacks.
And on-call pay. And that's different. On-call is when Jim's on call and he can't do anything for the day that he's on. And so that was something that we were seeing where people were being, it was, we needed to adjust it. They are currently looking at, and they just, I think, the vaca, the data on the vacation hours, and that one's a little more difficult for us to do. If you remember, we talked to council about the ability to hire individuals in with vacation that's commensurate with experience, most of years of service with the city. We're working through a couple of components on that, and specifically, one of the things council said is how do we address it for individuals who have been hired in recently? And they're working through some nuances in that. I wish it were less complicated, but we're running into some interesting complications on how do you operationalize that. So they're, they're working on that piece. The other one that, what's the other one that's coming forward, Joanne? What's A30? Inclimate weather was another one that we, we were working on in terms of how we compensate individuals, because we have a lot of folks that, that come in, and those were all things we were hearing from the organization. Part of it that, that interesting in this is, you know, there's things that we're seeing that you're, you're seeing connected into this that aren't directly related to it. You know, I've talked a little bit in my first presentation in terms of the police take-home vehicles. That is connected to this, and it's, it's, you have the issue of recruitment and retention embedded in this, but there's also this component of, of having your office there versus having to constantly move it. Obviously, we've been pretty aggressive in terms of work from home and, and how we utilize that, and we're continuing to evolve and learn. Anything else?
There, I, there's a few other pieces as well, and you'll see some, see them, I think, embedded throughout the presentation for budget. So, for example, the human resources coordinator, that's a project that Harold's been spearheading with St. Rain, to be able to bring in about 125 high school students, to be able to start to train them in different areas that they'd be interested in and expose them to the city. Work from home and also flexible scheduling, what we're seeing in some of our competitors is that they're starting to roll that back, which is a great advantage for us, I think, if we don't do that, because it's an interest for many of our applicants, and that may be something that we can use as a hiring advantage. So different pieces throughout. We may be missing a couple of things. I know Sandy just met with the whole Workforce of the Future team, which is kind of spread throughout the whole city, and we had a huge list of accomplishments that had come through, and also some pieces that we need to work on next, so we can present them together.
As we go through the rest of it, just to be helpful to highlight those, that these, this is what we are learning or what we learned from and how it shows up in budget recommendations. So it doesn't get lost, given the presentation we had 10 months ago.
We can, we can add that on the 13th. And the one thing I want to do is give some really big kudos to the Workforce of the Future team and, and what you're going to hear. This is a diverse group of individuals that represent all of our operational areas, or most of them. And so these are the folks where the rubber meets the road, and really happy with what I'm seeing, and they're definitely challenging us organizationally, which is good to see. I actually like it. It's fun.
Can I add a little bit about the juxtaposition? So Councilmember Waters, you were talking about how does the compensation play with the Workforce of the Future, and what we're finding is that it's the combination of both, right? Paying fairly, which is our compensation philosophy, is making sure that we're paying fairly to the market, and then in combination with flexibility and work-from-home options, or if you can't work from home, the option to have an inclement weather vacation day, if you're the one that has to come in and snowplow, if you're the one that has to be on call, that we're paying additional for those kinds of services. If you take that piece, and then you also have our traditional benefits, which, as you can see from what Gina said, are pretty good as well, and we're able to keep those steady as well. So if you have your traditional benefits, and now we have these Workplace of the Future benefits, and even includes things like ensuring that the workplace is very clean, you'll see some of those kinds of things in this, in this budget to make sure that people are staying home when they're sick, that they have that flexibility, that ability to either work from home or flex their schedules. It's really that whole package that we're going for. When we talk about total compensation, it really is total rewards, which is something that Gina has mentioned that I hadn't thought of before, but it's part of it. Compensation is one bit, but you combine that with the recommendations from the Workforce of the Future, which most of them have already been accomplished, we found out during our meeting as we checked them off. And then you add the traditional benefits, and hopefully we have just a really stellar workplace for people to thrive in.
Thank you. I think we're ready for the next part of this presentation.
So there's a couple of things that we wanted to touch on. So if we can go back.
I'm not sure what you just did.
I don't know what I, there you go.
There we go.
So Jim and I were going to talk about this, this section, because obvious questions is, it's different. This was negotiated last year during the collective bargaining process with police and fire. I wanted Jim to do just a quick refreshing on what was involved in this with city council, because as you will remember, again, kind of taking the total compensation and, and total rewards, there were other things that were associated with this. And the biggest was really the, the movement into giving both our police and firefighters the option of moving into the FPPA retirement plan, which is different than the plan that we had. So Jim, do you want to, just quickly? Okay.
Okay, so we'll just jump around on this slideshow, but Mayor Peck, members of council. So what, last year, we did negotiate a three-year contract with both police and fire unions. Part of that, key in part of that, and key in us being able to get a three-year contract was the addition of, of the opportunity for the active participants at that point in time to join FPPA, their statewide fire and police pension association, which has, offers both a defined benefit plan, which is like a pension, and a defined contribution plan, or a hybrid plan, actually, which is similar to what the city maintained was a defined contribution plans for tho, for those members. That, the, the results of that, I'm going to go take you through right here, but the cost of that was more expensive than what the city's plan was from a city contribution perspective. We were contributing 10% to their defined contribution plan. The 22 budget budgeted all of the, those eligible employees at 13.7%. And by the way, any new employees after that point in time have to then go into the defined benefit plan for FPPA. So what we did at that point is really, in a sense, is we closed off participation in the city's police and fire defined contribution plans. So the employee contribution requirement previous to this year was 10%. That moved up to 12% in all of these plans, the FPPA and the city plan. The results of those, of the votes to get in, individual selections, I should say, on whether to go in or to FPPA or not, were, in police, we had 109 members stay in the city's plan. 19 entered the FPPA defined benefit plan, and another 19 entered the FPPA hybrid plan. 19 entered the FPPA defined benefit plan, and another 19 entered the FPPA hybrid plan. In the fire, 36 members stayed in the city's defined contribution plan. 18 entered the FPPA defined benefit plan, and then 37 entered the hybrid plan. So, the contributions for 2023 for these plans, some of them are slightly changing and will change each year with FPPA. For all new employees, it's a 9.5% city contribution, which is less than what we were putting in the old system. Each year, that's going to go up a half a percent until it reaches 13%, and who knows beyond at that point. But that's what they're guaranteed through 2030. Reentry employees, these are the ones who are able to make the choice to go back, to go into FPPA. In the defined benefit plan, the city's contribution there is 11.4%. So, again, greater than what we're putting, we're putting in at 10% before. And then, in the hybrid plan, and as well as for the city's defined contribution plan, because we want it to be competitive and match what their defined contribution option was, that is moving up, or has, will move, is at 13.7% this year and will be as well again next year at 13.7%. So, you can see that the city was making a much greater commitment to pension contributions, regardless of which of these selections those active members went into. It's going to shift a bit after the first two years. So, after '23, the FPPA is charging us an additional contribution to kind of fund their defined benefits until they get a sense of what they're really going to cost the FPPA. And so, they're charging them a 1.7% premium in the hybrid plan and a 1.9% premium in the defined benefit plan. And the city's paying that in the first two years in full. Whatever that ends up being in year three and beyond, we'll share that with the employees. So, these percentages will drop probably in 2024. But I just wanted to show that that's part of the reason why we've got set compensation amounts within the CBA for police and fire for both '23 and '24, because we did get a three-year contract, which both parties were willing to agree to at the, because of the addition of the pension opportunity with FPPA, which was a big want on their part. So, we just wanted to point out that being an additional benefit beyond their 4% increase in the '23 budget. So, anything else you want to talk about on comp? Okay.
Are there any more questions on comp?
I think a couple of things I just want to throw in, if I can. So, everything that we've just talked about as far as the compensation system, the 101, the exceptional pay, that's all today, and we have no idea whether we're still here next year or whether we're looking at a totally revamped system, because we are asking these consultants to show us what are the best practices out there. And we know that there are other entities that have much wider ranges than the city of Longmont does and way different ways of moving people through their ranges. And we're open to looking at everything, and who knows what we'll come back with next year. So, that, we may not be calling it 101, 102 next year or something like that.
I think theoretically, and that's actually a great point, Jim, as we were talking to them, we actually had special sessions where we would jump in. And essentially, the request is this: read the crystal ball, predict what's in the future, tell us where we need to be, not what the traditional answer is, is here's your benchmarks, here's your standard plan, here's what you need to do. And so, that's really, I think we can't understate why. Really looking at trying to get a big three to come in and do this was important for us. And most of our funds are in the general fund, 72% of our, 70, what is it now?
Still about 70%.
70% of our expense in the general fund is our people. It is the most important. And then, even when you look at the other funds, it is the most important asset we have as an organization. And that's why we want to really look at this and look to the future. So, if and when this world hits us again, we're going to be in a great position.
And then, the final thing I wanted to add to, I think you heard a little bit about this last week from the city manager with his comments about, you know, hiring and trying to chase the market. You know, we think, we're hoping that what we've got in here with the 6% increase is what we're, we're calling it market, but we, that's based on the best data we have available, and we don't think that that's very strong data. So, we don't know if we're really paying 101. We just know it's 101 of what we have said as market. And what this study will also do for us, hopefully, is tell us, did we come up ahead or behind or at market? There is extra dollars that are budgeted in the city manager's contingency. If we have extreme situations where some positions may be way behind market, that we need to make adjustments sometime next year so that we're, you know, dealing with the retention issues that we're facing with compensation moving as fast as it is.
This was, in the 10 years that I've been here, in seven or eight or whatever it was in the previous city, this has probably been the hardest year for compensation. And it's because the world was moving so fast on us. Even as we're trying to figure out where it is, we're seeing holes develop in the organization, and we're doing real-time benchmarks. And, you know, for example, in our, I think it was our Level Two engineers, we had to review that real-time and had to make, I think it was a 10% adjustment real-time, because that's how fast the market moves. We were seeing this in multiple places. So, as we were looking at the data and coming in, and we talked about this a little bit in the opening, we heard 4%, we saw 4.1, we started going, we need to do our own surveys. City started talking about some combination of 6%. And so, the 6% was city's doing mid-year adjustments and then projecting next-year adjustment. And we're like, well, that's six, and the city's saying this. And there were surveys going out from multiple, I think there was one on the financial side where they were asking, HR was asking, everyone was moving around trying to figure out what's going on. We're a little different. And we're different because we have to give you a balanced budget on, before the 1st of September. So, we were taking this data. Some of the numbers that we were getting from some of the organizations, they don't necessarily have to do that. And the number they may come up with may be a little bit different as they're moving through their budget processes. This is something we were talking about today, trying to wrap our mind around this. But what we're saying is, based on what we saw, we think this is it. Now, to put it in perspective, I think this is the largest increase that we've seen in compensation in, how many years?
I can't remember.
And we're sitting there going, we're pretty sure this, we hope this is good, and we're going to bring the experts in to tell us, and we're putting more money, because that's how fast the world's moving. And so, I just wanted to give you all that perspective, because that delayed us to at least two weeks in the budget process, putting it together, just trying to get our arms wrapped around the compensation piece.
And actually, I did have one final memory that I needed, we wanted to put out there, that we do know that we have some errors in the proposed pay plan that was presented to you last week as part of this. So, we'll get those corrected. We just found some today. But our intention is to have in the final budget, the corrected amounts for that. So, we'll probably be bringing that to you towards the end of the month. So, with that, unless I have other questions on pay, I'm going to jump into the pension, rest of the pension benefit presentation.
So, I do have one question. And just, when you're talking about 101% of market value, when we're looking at new hires to fill some of the positions that are very difficult to fill, are we, are we offering market value for those employees or, you know, as an incentive or above-market value to get some of those positions filled?
So, we, above-market is exceptional pay. So, we can move up to market. And we have a pretty, this is what Jim was saying, we have a pretty narrow range. It's what, 92?
92 to 108.
92 to 108. And so, when we hire someone based on their skills and expertise, we can move them up to market if it's somebody that's coming in with a pretty robust skill set. Or you can say, we're not, you know, depending on the skill set, then this is really getting into the individual. Sometimes you can go, we want to start you at 95. At six months, once you get out of probation, you can get up to a 5% bump. So, then, you can go from 95 to 100. With special permission from the city manager, you can move up to market. And so, we're really looking at that as, on an individual basis. And so, there are times when someone is hired where they do bring them in at market based on that skill set and to be competitive with, you know, the world around us.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I could just add to that, we have had very exceptional cases where we needed to go over 101 if there was a critical need in the organization. But it's rare.
Okay. I guess whatever it takes.
All right. So, I'm going to move into our defined benefit pension plans. This is a reminder, we have three defined benefit plans. Two of them are old closed plans, one for police, one for fire. They have less, I think, nine or less in each of the two plans, either retirees or beneficiaries remaining in those plans. We do have a study, actuary study done on each of our defined benefit plans each year to see where we're standing and what our unfunded liability is, if one exists, and whether we need to change our contributions to those plans or funding. So, those are done during the year as of the first of that year. So, our last study was as of the first of 22, in January 1st of 22. And we received the results of that last month from our actuary. We receive it actually during the budget process, but the board actually receives the report in their August meeting. So, we have, for the two old hire plans, the old hire police plan has a negative unfunded liability, which in a sense is a surplus of $182,000. It's 117% funded. The old hire fire plan has a negative unfunded liability of $536,000, which is, means it's 121.4% funded. So, those both grew over the last year or through the end of '21, I should say. And 2020 and 2021 were very strong investment returns for our defined benefit plans. So, there's no city contribution required for either one of these plans. The general employees retirement plan, of course, this is an active plan, so we have new employees coming into it. Amount of the participant base changes over time. There's a whole history of this within your budget message. I'm not going to take you through the whole detail. I will say that it had a history of being fully funded until 2009, after the economic downturn of 2008. And so, since that time, we've been trying to do what we can to try to move it towards being fully funded. Whereas, at the same time, you know, we've increased contributions over the years, but we've also made changes in the plan benefits to try to bring down our costs. But additionally, just last year, we made some changes in assumptions that, in a sense, increased our unfunded liability, but were more realistic assumptions. And so, something that the plan was kind of behind the curve on putting those assumptions in place as far as our discount rate and mortality rates. So, the key here with the GARP plan is that it has not had a benefit, cost of living increase since the, since 2009 and since the point in time where it went unfunded. And we used to do that usually every three to five years. So, haven't had it in quite some time and can't, under tabor, unless it's fully funded. So, we've been trying to aggressively move it to fully funded. These are some of the changes I talked about, so I'll jump through that. Our funding policy is that we're amortizing the unfunded liability over 24 years from January 1st of 2021. It kind of rolls up each year. But in a sense, we're looking at 2045 before this plan is fully funded. So, it's not an ideal situation. When looking at our gains and losses, obviously, the last couple of years, and, you know, over time, you'll see all sorts of volatility in returns. Certainly, you're aware of what's going on in the market here in 2022. So, we've had two strong years that preceded 2022. And all the data that I'm giving you now is through those two strong years and doesn't include anything that's happened here in 2022. But you can imagine, it's not going to certainly put us in a better position, but we, but that, those losses, if we stay in a loss position, you know, keep your fingers crossed over the next four months. But if we stay in that position, then that will be smoothed out over five years as well. So, we reached an unfunded liability of $30.6 million at the beginning of this year, which was down from $37.2 million. And we reached 86.3% funding. Again, of course, the goal is to get to 100%. Our contribution requirement decreased from 15.85% to 14.86% of compensation. This year, we're not changing our contributions in the budget. The city is still going to contribute at 9%. Employees contribute at 6.6% if they were here anywhere at time before 2012, and 5.6% for employees subsequent to then. Those are, since we made changes in the benefits for new employees, they make less of a contribution as a result. So, this is what we talked about already, about the police and fire. And then, you already heard about the health benefit fund changes, or at least our benefit changes from Gina. From the fund perspective, you know, overall, our experience with Kaiser, with the 4.61% decrease that we'll be seeing next year, we've had a 3.72% aggregate blended premium increases since we joined Kaiser, which is really a good performance, good experience for the city of Longmont. Our contributions to the health benefit fund in this budget, as a percentage of pay, the city contributions are going to drop from 16% to 15% of pay. And that will, in doing so, we will still maintain about a $9 million fund balance in our health benefit fund. Besides paying for the claims for medical and dental and the other benefits that Gina went through, some of the smaller benefits that we pay out of this fund include some wellness costs at $32,000 as a projection of how much that might be next year. $50,000 for police and fire physicals and another 50 for public safety counseling. So, again, in your packet for tonight, I showed a pro forma that's shown our projections of what's going to happen with this fund in 2022 and 2023. And again, we should be maintaining, even with the decrease in contributions, will be about a $9 million fund balance, which is why we are reducing the contributions, because we don't need this to build up hires. So, and I think that's it for our presentation. And unless you have questions for me on any of that.
Seeing no questions. Whoops. Counselor Martin, are you?
Okay. We have one more budget presentation, but it's up to you all.
Do you, what would you like? Do you? Okay. Let's take a three-minute break. Okay. We're we're ready to resume the meeting.
Yes, Valerie, can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
Okay, it's not showing. Oh, give me just a second.
I can see it on my end. I've got beautiful charts, I hope they can see them. Just say when.
We're ready for you, Valerie.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So Mayor Peck and City Council members, Valerie Dodd, Executive Director of Next Light. I am here remote today because I am, I think, a little infectious and not in the good way, the bad way. And I am thankful for workplace flexibility. So thank you, Dallas and team, for accommodating me remotely today. So we will start with what I like to do is the really current situation. So you are free to advance, Dallas, if you can. All right, thank you. So the current situation really helps us understand what we're trying to achieve and accomplish as we look toward the next budget year. And where Next Light is sitting today is that we have good sales, we have good revenue, but things are starting to slow. We are starting to really finish our initial build. We're at ninety-one percent build of the community. We have over sixty percent penetration, over twenty-five thousand customers. So we've done most of the hard work, but you know what? I don't think I'll be happy till we have seventy percent penetration. And I also know that there's about eight thousand households in this community that have never had Next Light service. And I just think that's really a shame. We have, you know, free service for income qualifying households, and we have terrific speeds on the high end now offering ten gigabit. So we certainly have a little bit more headroom, but I want to make sure we realize that. The next is we do have those new services. I just mentioned ten gig, so that's a new service. We have a new Wi-Fi six and some other things that we really want to make sure that we promote to our existing customer base so that they have all the solutions they need. And also, I want to make sure we promote those so that we can continue to grow. Additionally, our competition is getting, I think, pretty desperate in the marketplace and is throwing out a lot of aggressive offers. And so I want to make sure that we are competitive in that space as well. The network is in great shape, by far the best network in town, but it does require a lot of maintenance. Also, we have to continue to keep our bandwidth and our capacity at adequate levels to future-proof the network. We also need to continue to expand with the city. I think we all know the city's grown at about one percent a year, and we've got a lot of MDUs or multiple dwelling units in the hopper. And so that means a lot more apartment buildings forthcoming that we're going to need to build into as well. And then lastly, I think we all know, as we're probably, most of us are Amazon consumers or Nordstrom shoppers, and we all know that the customer experience is continuing to become more automated, more simplified, more intelligent. And we need to keep up with customer expectations of their experience and their interactions with Next Light. So next slide. Given that current situation, what is really our focus for twenty-three? It's the same as it's been for the last seven years, but it'll continue to be the same. How we approach it will be different from year to year. But the focus is really to attract and delight customers. And the difference with satisfying and delighting customers is delighted customers will tell their friends and neighbors and help sell for you. So that's certainly what we plan to do. We plan to do that with a more sophisticated marketing plan than we've had in the past, a little more investment on the marketing front. Also, continue to invest in our highly reliable and fast network. And then lastly, really ensure that we're being customer-centric in all decisions and transactions. And that means implementing a new software platform called CRM, which stands for Customer Relationship Management. So next slide, and I'll go into a little more detail about those three key categories of focus for us. From a sales and marketing perspective, as I mentioned, we need to do a little bit more because we have more customers still to get. We don't want things to slow too much. We also have cool new products that we want to market to our existing customers. So for one, we're going to be doing quarterly acquisition campaigns to our existing customers as well as to new customers. We want to make sure everyone has access to great value. Also, we recognize a lot of people are coming in and out of town. And so, believe it or not, not everyone knows who Next Light is. So we are trying to invest in a little more brand advertising, and you may have seen some outdoor boards on the outskirts of town lately. On the fast, reliable network, nothing too particularly new here, but this is just investment because, again, it's bandwidth, it's backhaul, it's the connection to the internet, it's the redundancy to ensure if there is a fiber cut that we do have a way to reroute the traffic. And then lastly, the customer experience, I alluded to that CRM platform. Salesforce is the platform we will be using. It is the best out there, and it has a ton of capability that we will be initially using for the purpose of Next Light in our marketing efforts. But down the road, we think we can expand that to the balance of the city so that we have a unified database that really helps us understand our customers and the transactions and our interactions we're having with them. Next slide, please. So price tag, what's all that going to cost me? So I talked about some of our key focus areas. So the marketing, probably going to spend about five hundred thousand dollars in marketing. In the past, we spent probably four hundred thousand dollars. And the general gauge in this marketplace for, not marketplace, but this, I guess, market space rather, is to spend three to five percent of your recurring revenue on marketing. We are just under that three percent. So I feel like the five hundred thousand dollar investment is certainly well-suited for us. The fast, reliable network, three to four million dollars. So it's a big ticket item, but again, it's our long haul, it's our transport, it's redoing some of the fiber plant that may not be as stand up to the standards we so wish. And also, it's undergrounding some of the aerial that we have where we have a fair number of rodent chews causing some onesy-twosy outages. And then lastly, on the customer experience front, that CRM platform is being partially funded this year and then partially funded next year. A lot of the expense is the upfront fees and then also the carrying cost of those licenses. And then we have in the budget just one new incremental FTE, and it's for a digital navigation manager. And that position really is there to help us further penetrate our broadband, further penetrate our Wi-Fi six, and making sure that people are using the Wi-Fi six application to help manage all of their smart devices within their home. So it's really about enabling the, I guess, the smarter technologies, that connected home concept, so that person will help do that. And they may also serve as a project manager over some of the smart city initiatives, not just smart home initiatives. So I know Dr. Waters is going to say, Valerie, what are you going to give me for that FTE? I do not have hard and specific numbers, but we will know it was wisely invested when we have an increased penetration of broadband into some of those households that haven't typically had broadband at home. Believe it or not, there's about eleven percent of Longmont households that still do not have a connection at home. And so knowing that we can provide free service to many households, that's going to be a real focus. And then also making sure that we have good adoption, again, of the Wi-Fi six complementary service that provides a whole home solution and then helps people manage really the technology within their home. So, okay, that adds up to roughly five million dollars, right? Well, my budget I'm asking for is twenty million dollars. So where am I spending the rest of this budget? Let's go to the next slide and see. So this excludes the CIP, I'm treating that separately. So we're spending roughly seventeen million dollars across, generally equally, across the three categories of personnel, O and M, and then capital and non-operating. So on the left-hand side, you can see on the personnel, if you follow the big blue bar down, salaries and wages, no huge surprise. Operating and maintenance, that is mostly on repair and maintenance, which is really, again, the bandwidth, the backhaul, a lot of that co-location expense with actually having the infrastructure of our network. And then we have some pro services, which would be maybe our billing system or our advertising agency, et cetera. And then when you look at the capital non-operating, the vast majority or majority or five million dollars of that is for debt. And then you have a little bit around machinery and equipment, which, again, is just really helping us maintain the network and the infrastructure of that. So what are the trends looking like in these categories? We will flip to the next slide and see. So first, let me explain, I had three categories on the earlier slide. I combined the last two categories because we did have some shifting of expense, and I wanted to normalize that so that you could see how it came out in the wash. And so while I'm speaking about that, the O and M and the capital non-operating, when you look over the course of the few years, we're really looking at flat expenses over twenty-two. And then when you look at the total personnel, there's just a slight bump up. Again, you just heard about the six percent increase in salaries and then also the one additional FTE. So that's causing a little bit of incremental expense in the personnel category. Next slide, please. So now we'll talk, I'm sorry, no question, okay. So we'll talk about capital very briefly because Dennis covered this last week. But just a reminder that we are spending almost four million dollars in capital. It is down from last year, and most of that is going towards fiber installation and fiber construction. When we're putting in a brand-new fiber drop into a household, that is considered capital. And so we still have lots of households we still need to sell into. And so that carries with it some some big expense, but it's a one-time investment. And then on the construction side, that mostly relates to the new apartment builds and then maybe the occasional road move or other capital project outside of our area. And then what's the trend on capital? Next slide, I already alluded to it, it's down just a little bit favorably. And so again, you see how the dollars are split across the categories. It's construction and new installs, and the trend has been coming down, and that is due in large part to the fact that we're not building out like we used to be. We're year seven and ninety-one percent built, as I mentioned earlier, so we don't have nearly as many brownfield or greenfield new builds as we have in the past. So next one, please. So, okay, I just spent twenty million dollars. What do we get for that investment? It's an important question, and we will go to the next slide to answer that. We're going to get customers, we're going to keep customers, and we're going to gain customers. So we are hoping to end twenty-twenty-three with twenty-seven thousand customers. And so today, we're sitting at twenty-five thousand, I think, eighty-three customers. And again, we will be adding several thousand in order to net the roughly fifteen hundred customers to get us to twenty-seven thousand. And so for one, we'll be doing that with our bulk MDU agreements that we have, and that is where we will sign up an apartment or condominium, we'll sign up with the management agency, provide a discounted rate if they sign up all of their one hundred percent of their units with us and include that in the rent or the HOA fee or what have you. And let me make sure people understand that we are not keeping other carriers out. So if a resident of any of these apartments wants to sign up for service with another carrier, they are free to do so. But we are just providing an incentive and an added value to that particular apartment or building facility to include a really great discounted rate for one gigabit internet. Excuse me. So on the chart on the right, you see that blue bar, that is our customer count. As I mentioned, it's going to go to twenty-seven thousand, and then it's basically going to flatten out as we continue to really hit really high penetration numbers. The red graph shows our growth rate. So we've been growing at a really high clip, eight percent plus year after year, but we know that that's starting to slow, and we wanted to make sure we factored that into the budget so that we didn't get into an unforeseen situation financially. So we've been conservative in our approach about the growth, and we still have wonderful financials, which you'll see in just a couple slides. Also, no, sorry, I came a tickle. Also know that our customer count will be growing at a higher rate than our revenue, and that's because we're continuing to bring in more customers on the low end, which have a lower ARPU, which is average revenue per unit. And so many of those income qualifying customers, we're getting maybe thirty dollars for instead of a fifty or sixty. And that's a good thing. So we're happy, happy to have those customers. Also, when we get these MDU bulk deals, we get a hundred percent of those customers, which is great, but at a lower cost. And so that's why you'll see the revenue not quite keeping up with the customer growth. But that's a good thing because we want to sell into all households regardless of their ability to pay for a seventy-dollar gigabit service. Next slide, please. So those customers, we love having customers, but we also love having the revenue associated with them. And the preponderance of that revenue comes from a gigabit residential internet, no surprise. You see that there in the pie chart on the left, and then on the right-hand side, as I just mentioned, that the revenue is declining, has been, you know, in excess of eight percent. We're really estimating just about a three percent revenue growth year over year. So again, thinking that we're being conservative, but also putting a stretch goal on ourselves to make sure we continue to drive for growth. Okay, next slide. Okay, so I spent twenty million dollars in expense, I'm promising twenty million dollars in revenue, so what does it look like together? And on the next chart, you'll just see what I love is a waterfall chart, so you can kind of see what's coming in and what's going out. So you see the revenue in the green on the left, and then you see the chunk of salaries coming out, and then that network and marketing, most of that is networking. So don't think that, again, we're only spending five hundred thousand dollars, not five million on marketing. And then you see the debt, which is a huge chunk of our expense, and then the CIP in the bottom right-hand corner of roughly three point seven million dollars. So it's a balanced budget, and we didn't really have to manipulate anything to get to this. We did have to cut a few expenses and back off some of the testing tools that we had on the network side, but we were able to bring this in and feel confident with the numbers. So next slide will show what it looks like for the next ten years, and I love this chart. I'm really going to love it in seven years. So let's start at the top, the blue line. The blue line is really the revenue, which I just mentioned, is going to kind of grow a little bit and then flatten out. That's great. The orange is our operating expense, which will kind of continue on pace until we pay off that five billion dollars a year expense. And so you will see the the large drop there in the orange line, which is great. And then the gray at the bottom is the CIP expense that will slowly decline over time as we continue to reinforce, fortify, and rehab our network. And then the probably most important chart or part of this chart is that yellow bar, which is the bottom line, the ending working capital, and you see that obviously spike hockey stick on the right in twenty-twenty-nine, again, after we retired. And you see that obviously spike hockey stick on the right in 2029, again, after we retired the debt. And then if you look further to the right, you see that there's a bunch of, of cash coming in that we will reinvest in the network as well as back into the city. So next slide is my summary. And all in all, things are good, but we aren't going to take that for granted. We're going to continue to fight for new customers and fight to keep our existing customers by really investing in a great customer experience. Really, I think a lot of the things are starting to scale in the business, so those expenses are coming down. And I don't know that we'll have to reinvest or grow too much more to maintain the operation that we have for the next 10, 10 years or so. And obviously, once we pay the debt off, we'll be in really good shape. And we are, you know, making sure though that we're spending the right amount of money to, again, strengthen the network to ensure that it is future-proof so we can continue to provide the quality service that we do today. So thank you and I look forward to any questions you may have.
Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you very much, Valerie. That was a great presentation. I like your waterfall graph as well. It's easy to understand.
Yeah, it's my favorite chart and it's, it's a click on Excel. It's a wonderful thing. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I appreciate your support.
Thank you. So Harold, where are we on the budget?
This is it for budget. We're going to move to the next item.
Okay. And that's our utility rate studies, proposed rates?
Is there any more, is there any questions on budget or anything council wants us to bring back? You've thought about since last week's presentation and then this week's?
I think just the things that Council Waters wanted more in-depth on the future workforce or workforce of the future.
That'll come next week.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here to talk about the next step in the rate proposals that we spoke about initially in, in June have provided some information about the cost drivers that have occurred since then. So we'll, we'll go through the proposed rates for both electric and wastewater and then look for your feedback.
Good evening, Mayor Peck, members of council. My name is Brian McGill, utility rate analyst with Strategic Integration. And as Becky just mentioned, back in June, Raven gave a presentation informing council that staff was performing cost of service studies for both the electric and wastewater utilities. And tonight Raven and I are here to present the results of those and the proposed rates associated with those cost of service studies. So this is our agenda for tonight. I'll start off the presentation by reviewing the electric rate proposals. Then I'll hand it off to Raven for the majority of the presentation. And she will start with the wastewater cost of service results and proposed rates. And then she'll move into how these rate proposals will impact the average residential utility bill on a monthly basis. And then she will also discuss the assistance programs that are available for our customers to take advantage of, including the Longmont Cares monthly rebate program. And she will also be presenting the changes for that program associated with the electric and wastewater utilities. Then she'll talk about the community outreach efforts that we are performing. And then we'll finish up the presentation with council discussion, questions and direction for staff to move forward with rate proposals. Okay, so before I get into the electric utility, I just wanted to note that in 2021, staff did perform a cost of service study for the electric utility. And council approved electric rates for 2022 and 2023. And the rate proposals that I'm presenting tonight will be in addition to those rates that have already been adopted. So the first two items on the slide have to deal with rate structure and the rate philosophy behind that structure. And so currently our electric customers, every rate has a monthly customer charge as well as a per kilowatt hour energy charge. And a few of our rate classes do have a per kilowatt demand charge as well. And then all of our self-generation customers do have a rate element for our generation credit. And they receive that credit for all the kilowatt hours that they produce and push back onto our electric grid. And currently that rate is set at the retail rate, so they get paid back the same amount that they pay for the energy they pull off of the grid. And so we're not proposing any changes to those rate structures. Oh, another element that we have for all of our residential and commercial customers is a seasonal rate. And so how that works is during the four summer months, June, July, August and September, the electric rates are higher than they are for the non-summer months. And the reason behind that higher summer rate is so that way we can recover the increased costs associated with generation and distribution of the higher energy that's demanded during those four summer months. And so again, we're not proposing any changes to the rate structure at this time. And then what I mean by rate structure philosophy is in 2021, when council approved and adopted the rates for 2022 and 2023, the way we applied those increases was we put 100% of the increases into the energy charges for the customers. And we left the monthly customer charge at the 2021 rate. And by doing so, we're trying to give our customers as much control as possible over the actual percentage increase that they would see on a monthly bill. And so the way that works is if, if a customer is able to use less energy than the average customer for their rate class, then they would actually see a lower percentage increase than the average customer would by controlling the amount of energy they're using on a monthly basis. And so we're proposing to do the same thing this time to add 100% of the increase into the energy charges and leave the monthly customer charge flat. Okay, then I'm going to talk about the major factors contributing to the electric rate increase. And then we're also proposing an increase to the monthly electric rebate through the Longmont Carriage program and Raven will talk about that when she gets to that section of her presentation. We are proposing a significant increase to that rebate on the electric side. And the, the goal there is to try and cover the majority of the projected average monthly increase for our residential customers to qualify for that program. Then I'll finish up the electric portion of the presentation by talking about the future electric rate analysis plans. Okay, so now I'm going to talk about the major factors that are driving the increased revenue requirement for the electric utility. There's two major factors contributing to this increased revenue requirement. The first being an increase of the wholesale energy costs from Platte River Power Authority. And you'll remember that last month, PRPA staff came and gave a presentation and they talked to you guys about this. And so what, what PRPA is proposing is an actual 5% rate increase for 2023 as opposed to the 3.2% increase that we used when we did the cost of service back in 2021. And so there's a couple of factors going into that increase from 5%, yeah, from 3.2% to 5%. One of the major factors is the, the change in the resource plan. When they had originally done that, they had, to meet our 2030 renewable goal, they had proposed bringing on all the renewable sources in 2030. However, when they have updated that plan, now they are projecting to bring those renewable sources on two years earlier in 2028 and so actually in 2027 as well. By doing that, they are giving themselves the opportunity to make sure that the operational experience is the way they think it will be prior to actually closing the coal-fired generation facility at Rawhide. And then the other factor going into the increased wholesale energy rate from Platte River is the inflation that the entire country is experiencing. So as you can see, the increase from 3.2% to 5% is contributing a almost one and a half million dollars to our increased revenue requirement. And then the other major factor is just the inflation that Longmont Powered Communications itself is experiencing. We're seeing higher contracted labor, equipment, material costs all the way across the board. And that's, that's requiring an additional slightly over half a million dollars worth of revenue requirement. So if you look at the chart, you can see the total additional revenue requirement for 2023 is slightly over $2 million, which equates to an average rate increase, additional rate increase of 2.3%. And I'll get into the rate class by rate class breakdown in a couple of slides. Okay, so I pulled this slide straight out of the presentation that Platte River gave. It's just a visual representation of the changes that they've made to the resource plan. You can see the purple line shows the original plan included adding all those renewable sources in 2030, whereas now the blue line shows adding about half those in '27 and then the remainder of those in 2028. And another benefit of doing this though, besides the, the ability to get the operational experience is it actually increases the reduced cumulative carbon emissions by approximately 5.5%. Okay, this is just a slide showing how Platte River, how Platte River's wholesale rates compared to the other regional providers. And based on this chart, Platte River has 18% lower rates than the next lowest regional provider. And by us being able to purchase our power from Platte River, us and the other owner communities, which include Longmont, Fort Collins, Loveland and Estes Park, all four of those utilities, because of the low wholesale energy costs, are able to keep our rates among the lowest in the state of Colorado. Okay, so this chart shows the actual percentage increases by rate class. And so in the previous slide, I said the average was 2.3%. As you can see, it varies rate class to rate class. And that's all based on how much each of the rate classes contribute to the overall city peak demand and as well as how they actually use the distribution system. And so the top three rate classes are residential classes. And you can see that we're proposing an additional increase of 2.1% for the residential classes. And then the next three classes are commercial classes. And the proposed increases there vary from 2.2% to 2.6%. One other note on here is the bottom two, the general fund classes. You see those are only 1.8% and that is because based on municipal code, the general fund electric rates are designed only to recover wholesale energy costs. And so that 1.8% is the difference between the 5% and the 3.2%. So then the other class, I, I just want to talk a little bit about the residential energy class, the top one, because that encompasses 92% of our total customer base, by far and away the largest class that we have. And you can see there the 2.1% for an average customer who uses 700 kilowatt hours a month, that's going to equate to a average monthly increase of $1.61. Again, here though is by putting all that charge into the energy charges, if a customer is able to use less than that 700 kilowatts in a month, then they will see a lower than $1.60 charge and which would equate to a less than a 2.1% increase. Okay, then I'll finish up the electric portion of the presentation just by talking about future electric rate plans. The one thing I know for sure is that in 2023, staff will be completing a cost of service study to set rates for 2024. Due to changes in wholesale energy and operational costs, we might be potentially doing annual studies for the next couple of years. The other thing that we're going to be working on is gathering usage data from the AMI implementation to inform future rate structure changes. And then the final item here is the electric community investment fee. Staff is hoping to bring back updates in either October or November for that. That was another thing that Raven had talked about at her June presentation is bringing back changes to our system development fees for water, wastewater, storm drainage and electric. And so this ECIF, that's the electric system development fee. And so the system development fees are fees that are charged to the developers and they pay those as new and redevelopment happens within the city. And the reason we charge them a fee for that is because then we're able to keep those type of expenses for expanding the system to handle that new development out of our customers' rates. And so that's the philosophy behind that is development pays its own way. Okay, now I'm going to pass it to Raven to talk about the wastewater utility. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Peck and members of council. I'm Raven Martin, Business Analyst with Strategic Integration. In the previous council presentation for the rate study for wastewater, we provided information on the current state of the fund and discussed the primary drivers necessitating performing a rate study. In this presentation, I will discuss the revenue requirements for the sewer fund, provide additional information about the primary cost drivers as well as how PNR, PWNR staff created a prioritization matrix for this rate study to identify the highest priority projects and discuss funding sources for capital projects, including grants and debt service options. This presentation is only about the wastewater rate schedules. The system development fees is a separate independent rate study, which I will be presenting in the upcoming months. PWNR is proposing a rate increase using a three-year rate schedule. And I will be presenting four rate alternatives as well as information on rebates for qualifying residents. After the last presentation in June, PWNR staff met to take a detailed look at the projects that are the highest priority for funding in the next five years. We looked at updates to costs due to inflation as well as determined which projects could be delayed. The result of this prioritization matrix was a list of projects determined to be the highest priority. And the total is represented in the following slide for revenue requirements. Primary among the infrastructure costs for wastewater is digester number four, a new anaerobic digester to increase capacity and redundancy of the existing process. This project at the wastewater treatment plant will allow existing infrastructure to meet the changing needs of the community and protect, protect the, and protect and conserve Longmont's natural resources and environment. The estimated cost for digester number four is over $19 million. There, there may be the option for additional debt service for this project in 2025 with voter approval on a proposed bond issuance of $19 million to complete improvements to digester number four. Annual debt service payments for this bond proposal would be approximately $1.5 million. Another major factor is increased regulation. The state enacted Regulation 85, which calls for more stringent water quality standards for total inorganic nitrogen and total phosphorus, which require new or modified treatment processes. This includes the design of a new chemical removal system. And design for this began in 2021 with construction anticipated for 2023. The city's 2018 discharge permit is currently on a compliance schedule and is set to expire in September. in September of 2023. However, as regulations are becoming more stringent, we are anticipating additional compliance regulations, which are currently evolving. Improvements to the wastewater treatment facility will meet water quality standards, extend the life of the plant, improve operations, and reduce operating costs. Another major factor is the significant inflation occurring across all sectors, which has impacted the cost of providing utility services due to increased costs. For wastewater, there has been a significant increase in the cost of treatment chemicals, fuel, and metals essential to providing the service. Also, the city's wastewater collection master plan presented to council last year determined that approximately 8% of Longmont sewer lines are undersized for existing growth. The priority list includes a $17 million investment in asset management of wastewater infrastructure between 2023 and 2025. With digester number four, it will be covered by debt service payments as mentioned above. The city's current wastewater rates were adopted in 2017 on a three-year rate schedule and have remained at the same rate since 2020. This has been insufficient to cover the costs of needed maintenance since then and operating costs or satisfy the infrastructure needs for future growth. There are also significant risks associated with delaying replacement of key wastewater system assets, and a rate increase will allow the wastewater utility to continue work to improve and maintain our wastewater drainage system. In addition to generating revenue through rates and system development fees, funding is also available through other funding sources. With voter approval, utilities can issue debt to spread the costs of infrastructure improvement over time. However, council has the authority under Section 10.2 of the Charter to issue revenue bonds in an amount up to one-half of 1% of the assessed valuation of the city without going to a vote. There is also federal funding and state grants, such as the Inflation Reduction Act and the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. Funding for these is becoming available over the next several years, and staff is actively looking for funding opportunities as they arise. One recent example of a grant received is through the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment for PFAS, also known as the forever chemical, which will assist in testing ground, surface, and water treatment infrastructure for these chemicals. This slide outlines the total proposed funding of the wastewater fund for 2023 through 2025, including operating expenses, existing and proposed bond payments, capital expenses, and change in fund balance. This table demonstrates our plan to use existing fund balance towards funding projects to offset the increases that our customers would pay. Revenues generated through a potential rate increase would be used only to fund projects identified with the highest priority. Staff is proposing a $19 million issuance of additional debt to help cover the cost of digester number four construction, and this is illustrated in year 2025. A bond election would be required for that and would increase the revenue requirement by just over $1.5 million each year beginning in 2025. All rate alternatives that I will be presenting will sufficiently achieve the desired revenue to fund those high priority projects previously mentioned. Currently, metered water users are charged a monthly service charge plus a volume charge. Alternative one will maintain the current rate structure but increases the rates only in the metered volume charge, which is highlighted in blue. Alternative two will also maintain the current rate structure, but rate increases are seen in both the monthly service charge as well as the metered volume charge. Both rate alternative one and alternative two will sufficiently achieve the desired revenue, but alternative two is recommended because the increased rate amount in the monthly service charge could be offset by a potential addition of a wastewater rebate to the Longmont Cares program. As mentioned previously, council has authority under Section 10.2 of the Charter to issue revenue bonds in an amount up to one-half of 1% of the assessed valuation of the city. This slide outlines the total proposed funding of the wastewater fund for 2023 through 2025, including the $6 million bond issuance authorized by council, and includes the 441,000 bond payments that would begin in 2023, as well as the proposed bond payments of $1.5 million for digester number four beginning in 2025. Alternative three therefore includes both the volume and monthly service charge increase for wastewater, as well as reflects the decrease in the total amount due to the issuance of that bond for Section 10.2. Alternative four will also maintain the current rate structure, but rate increases are seen both in the monthly service charge as well as in the metered volume charge. Longmont's utility bills provide excellent value. 2022 rates are low compared to other front-range communities, and a broad range of reliable services are provided. Electric rates in particular are currently among the lowest in the state, which contributes to the overall affordability of utility bills in Longmont. The next several slides show the total bill impact for the proposed rate increases for all utilities, including all previous rate increases, as well as the proposed increase for electric presented today. For wastewater, the rate increases occur only in the metered volume charge. The amount increases and the percentage increases for alternatives are shown on the right columns for comparison. This table represents the proposed rate increases for alternative two for all utilities, but for wastewater, the rate increases rate increase amounts are shown in the monthly service charge as well as the metered volume charge. This table represents the proposed rate increases for alternative three, with the wastewater rate increase occurring only in the metered volume charge and including Section 10.2. And finally, alternative four represents the amounts for Section 10.2, but the wastewater rate increases occurring only in, sorry, in the monthly service charge as well as in the metered volume charge. All those charts basically are illustrated here in this one comparison table, which is a side-by-side table showing the different alternatives and how the average monthly wastewater charge, what the average monthly wastewater charge would be for each alternative for each year, based on the average monthly wastewater amount of 5,000 gallons. The city of Longmont offers residents opportunities to lower their bills by using energy and water more efficiently. Programs such as Efficiency Works assist homeowners and businesses in identifying options for efficiency upgrades, as well as rebates and discounts available for more efficient appliance solutions. LPC is a participant in Colorado's Affordable Residential Energy Program, or CARE, which is available to income-qualified residents and provides free home energy audits and energy efficiency upgrades to reduce energy usage and make homes more comfortable. Several partner agencies are able to provide assistance each year for utility payments, including federal assistance for heating costs through LEAP or crisis assistance through the Hour Center. Residents may also qualify for the Income-Based Assistance Program, Longmont City Assistance and Rebate System, or Longmont Cares. Through Longmont Cares, residents receive rebates on the following items: sales tax, property tax or rent, parking greenway maintenance fee, electricity, storm drainage, and water. This program has seen significant increased enrollment since it began in 2019, and the city is continuing to increase the number of participants through outreach efforts. There are an estimated 1,800 residents that are eligible to receive these monthly rebates. Currently, the electric rebate refund is $9 in 2023. LPC is proposing to increase the monthly rebate amount to $10.50. An increase of $1.50 per month will cover 93% of the average residential customer's monthly increase. This chart displays the financial impact of the proposed increases in the rebate amount. Wastewater rates are not currently a part of the Longmont Cares program, therefore staff recommends extending a rebate to qualifying residents. For rate alternatives two and four, the amount of the rebate is the entire amount of the proposed rate increase in the monthly service charge. This chart shows the financial impact of the proposed increases in the total rebate amount at the target program participation amount of 1,800. There are a number of opportunities available to engage the public around utility bills. The Sustainable Business Program connects businesses to partners and programs for reducing electric and water consumption. Their quarterly newsletter focused on water and offered tips for how to reduce consumption and save money. Messaging for electric is broadcast through a variety of city channels, including Cityline, CityTalk, LPC Next Slides More Power to You blog, social media, and the city's website, outreach activities during community events, and information regarding potential rate changes is also available in both English and Spanish on a city webpage, as well as through citywide locations that have high contact with residents. Council is asked to provide direction to LPC on preparing electric rate ordinances for the proposed electric rate increase, as well as the increase in the amount of electric rebate for the Longmont Cares program. Council is also asked to provide direction to PWNR on a wastewater rate option and preparing rate ordinances based on that option. Also, council is asked to provide direction to PWNR in preparing an ordinance to amend the Longmont Cares rate section to include the wastewater rebate as part of the Longmont Cares program. Please let us know if you have any questions, or if you would like any further information, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Yeah, I have two questions about the bond issues and digester number four. So I was clear up to the point of in 2025, we're going to have a ballot measure, a ballot question that's going to ask for a bond issue to pay for digester number four. Where what I don't completely understand is two things. One, where does the 10.2 bond issue come in? Does that also pay for digester number four, or is it just to generally lower rates, or what? Because I didn't hear that part.
Councilmember Martin, that Section 10.2 would be for the short-term projects for 2023 and 2024 and is not related to digester number four payments.
Okay, and what happens if we don't issue the 10.2 bond issue?
Then we would have to fund it through other means, and that would mean we would have to have... Sorry, we're going back to the slide so you can see it. And it would be included in the rate schedule that we collect, the revenue that we collect through just the increase. However, the prioritization matrix identified the various projects that were the highest priority, and so we would go through that list and ensure that whatever is highest on that list would be taken care of first.
Okay, so if we don't do the 10.2 bond issue, then some of the work that is on the to-do list doesn't get done?
That is correct, and we have identified which ones could be delayed if necessary or which ones are the lower priority.
And so then if the 2025 bond issue does not pass, that means that the digester number four is not funded? And do we live without digester number four? And if so, what are the consequences of that?
I think we need to back up a little bit.
Yeah, so I would say that a little bit differently. I think if we don't issue the 10.2, you know, bonds under 10.2, then that just limits your option set here to alternatives one and two. So, you know, it's short-term and, you know, within that next three years, potentially higher rates, but, you know, long-term probably lower costs because there's no issuance cost or interest cost.
Okay, so we will raise rates rather than not doing necessary repairs?
Correct.
Right, okay. Then digester number four.
Digester number four. I may invite Bob to come up and talk about that a little bit, but there are definitely operational and regulatory consequences to not implementing that project over the next five years, and Bob will, he's yes, nodding that I said that correctly. Bob, do you want to add to that?
Mayor and council, the easy answer to that?
The easy answer to that is that we would haul the biosolids, mostly as liquid, for probably a couple million per year. So you'd pay for your digester pretty quickly by building it rather than doing that.
So we just have to explain that to the voters?
Yeah, I think the issue is you don't have a choice. You have to do it. And if you don't, and Bob, you can step here, if you don't build a digester, you still have to get rid of it, and getting rid of it operationally is a higher cost.
Okay, thank you. That's what I needed to know. Counselor Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Peck. Let me just follow up on Councilmember Martin's question. Could you go to Slide 12? Just so I understand the timing. So this shows the proposed bond payment in 2025 of a bond question in 2025. How in the heck do you get, how do you generate $1.5 million between November, whatever the election date is, and the end of, in the end of the year to make a $1.5 million bond payment in 2025?
Mayor Peck, Councilmember Waters, we would recommend going to election in 2024 for that issuance.
Well, that's, that's, that's an important consideration. Is, is, so the plan is a 2024 bond question, not a 2025 bond question?
Correct, for '25 issuance, yes.
Say that again?
For issuance of the bonds in 2025.
Correct, for, this is specifically then for digester number four?
Correct.
All right. You've partially answered the only other question I guess I would have, Harold, and that is the cost of, maybe I have two questions. The cost of not doing this is, is not just the however many millions of dollars a year we would spend to haul the liquid waste away, right, that we would be able to process through digester number four. That's, that's, that's an obvious calculable cost on an annual basis, but there's a bigger cost here across the board, not just wastewater, of all the infrastructure-related projects here. The implications or the cost of not doing this to Longmont residents. And I, and I just think every time we're in this conversation, I think we need to reinforce for us and for the community, and maybe for us so that we can, in conversations with the community, remind people of what the implications are if we don't do this. I will read about myself in the TC line and other parts of the, you know, on social media about the, be reminded the idiot I am, because I've been told, you know, I've read it how many times, I'm one of the idiots up here. With all due respect, I don't think anybody up here is an idiot. I just read it from the public about raising rates again. Don't we get it? Don't we understand how the cost of living in this town? And we've done it again, and we do it over and over again. I was, I left a social activity this afternoon that was organized by my church, and as I'm walking out the door saying goodbye, somebody says, oh, remember, don't raise rates. That was the last comment. I didn't have time to say, let me tell you what it's going to cost if we don't. But, but remind us, what's it going to cost if we don't? Here's the bigger related question. Probably can't do it tonight, but it would be helpful to get an estimated cost of upgrading or updating our infrastructure across the board, all right? Harold, in an earlier conversation even this evening, you, you pointed out that much of the infrastructure that exists in Longmont was paid for by developers. The, the comment that development pays its own way, right, initially. The rest of us pay for that cost over the next 50 years. So I've asked the question when we've seen annex- So I've asked the question when we've seen annexation applications, and we get a thirty-year analysis, I've said, "Can we see the fifty-year analysis?" Because that's the lifespan of the infrastructure. And if we go back to this, to the systems we're talking about now, we're talking about the, the bill is coming due now, it's just starting, and it's going to run for a while to cover the cost of up, of infrastructure upgrades. That's why we got the federal legislation. But Longmonters need to understand, if we don't want to become Flint, Michigan, and Jackson, Mississippi, and fill in the blank, what, what's it going to cost us in the short term so we'd, well, and on an ongoing basis, so we don't ever become Flint, Jackson, or, you know, the rest of the parts of the country that we read about, and are aghast at how their municipalities could let that happen? So, big questions, I'll be quiet.
So what I would say is, I would point everyone to a great article in the Wall Street Journal. I called it up just now. And for everyone's reference, it's called "Jackson Water Crisis Forces Cities to Confront Their Own Aging Infrastructure Issue." Utilities say the situation in Mississippi's capital is a wake-up call to problems with the nation's aging pipes and pumps. So you got to start there. And I think when you look at Flint, Michigan, Newark, New Jersey, Jackson, they profile areas in Southern California, this is not new. There's an interesting paragraph in here that says, "Unlike bridges and roads and subway lines, clean drinking waters isn't primarily funded by taxes. More than ninety percent of the average utilities' revenues come directly from constituents' water bills. Those bills are soaring along with the cost of fixed problems. Homeowners' water and wastewater maintenance bills across the country are up an average of forty-six-point-six percent over the past ten years." What's happening is the, the, it's time to pay the piper, based on, if you've had a location in an area where you haven't made incremental improvements to the infrastructure, and it has now aged out, you're buying a lot of problems. I think the number that they're releasing now with Jackson is two billion dollars to replace the system. And, and what you look at, and Bob knows this about me, I'm kind of hypersensitive to water leaks. And when I start seeing in my column and go, what's going on? Why am I hypersensitive? When you start seeing multiple boil water notices, you start seeing multiple water leaks, what you really, it's too late at that point. The problems are there, and you have to fix it, and it's much more costly to do it at that point than if you take a, a really focused incremental process, steps into rebuilding the infrastructure, and it costs money. It is incredibly hard to look the community in the face and say, "We need to raise your water bill five percent," or ten percent. Think about those communities that have to look at their residents and say, "We have to raise it twenty percent," or twenty-five percent. Even with the federal dollars coming down, when you read the articles, there is not enough money to deal with these issues, and they're going to have to deal with the most severe issues throughout the country. And so I think what I would say is, this is not a cost we can avoid. This is a cost that will hit us at one point in time. And if you deal with it on the front end, while it may be a little bit painful, it's going to be much more affordable than waiting until it blows up on you, because it will, and we're seeing that across the nation in cities. Cities that are having one major water line run from their water supply source to their treatment plant. Think about that for just a second. And now they're having to figure out, how do we build this? And if you say, if you would have built it fifteen, twenty years ago, what would the cost difference be in the price of adding additional water line? Hundreds of millions of dollars in this. And so what I would say is, we are in a good position in terms of Longmont today. I talk about it in terms of where our infrastructure is, based on where we've seen the bulk of our development in our community. We're at that point where we're entering the replacement cycle. Look to the other cities, and, and don't miss that opportunity to start proactively replacing, because it may not cost me more, but it's certainly going to cost someone who comes out thirty years after me more, and give them a really big problem to deal with. And I don't know how else to say this, other than you can read multiple articles, I can talk about my personal experience. That's the world. And I don't know if that answered your question, but, you know, that's what I'm seeing.
Go ahead.
Thanks. It answers, first of all, I get the rationale. I think we ought to amplify what you just said. We ought to take advantage of every opportunity to amplify what you just said. Because people are going to, it's just going to be a glancing, you know, message, and, and people are going to look at their bill, and, and then we're going to read about it. I think we just need to continue to remind people of what the implications are if we don't do this. The costs are much greater. I, I'd still like to go back at some point, not tonight, but I think at some point, we ought to have, we ought to have this, the gestalt, what's the big picture, over the next decade or two, whoever sits up here, right, to be reminded, as candidates, to be reminded in forums, and their willingness to make the hard decisions, unpopular decisions, to keep Longmont from ever having to ask the federal government to socialize our unwillingness to make the investments that we have to make. And with that, so, what that estimated cost would be, and I, it's going to be, I'm certain a gross ballpark, but I think it would be really helpful. And there's probably no way to do what I'm going to ask about now, but, but I wish there would be. That, the CARES Act...
Sorry?
Is, not CARES Act, the CARES program allows those who are really suppressed financially to get some relief from these rate increases. But that, we're going to socialize that. I mean, others are, others are going to pay for that cost, because of what we're doing with, with rate increases, right? It'd be nice if we could some way scale that socializing, that cost, so those who are on the upper level of the income spectrum in Longmont, to absorb more of this, because those who are just on the edge, who don't qualify for CARES, but are going to pay the same rate increase as somebody making multiples of what they make annually, right, in terms of their rate increase. And through our billing system, there, I don't know if there's a way to do it, but it just, it's hard, it's harder to sell to somebody who's on the edge than somebody who, for this, this, this doesn't matter, they won't even recognize it, right, from month to month, in terms of the impact on their ability to buy food, or gas, or pay for rent, or whatever. If there was a way to somehow scale that, and I know that's like means testing for, at a few dollars a month, probably doesn't make a lot of sense, but if there was a way to do it, we ought to do it, in my opinion.
Counselor Martin? Thank you, Mayor Peck. I just wanted to say, you know, even though it may not be perfect in terms of being perfectly progressive, but I wanted to commend the rate calculation process for automatically putting the increase in the CARES Act, I'm sorry, there we go again, the CARES rebate. When we originally had a good-sized electric rate increase, the council had to remind the staff of, of the necessity to do that. So I really appreciate that being rolled in. In terms of communication, it was really nice to see that stacked bar chart of the other Front Range communities, and overall, how big they're built. That, well, that one, go back, go back, that one, yeah. And it's nice that we are so close to the low end, but it would be even better, what I'm thinking, especially in terms of, you know, the skinniness of some of those bars, it would be really good to know in the, about the cases where Longmont is actually providing services at a higher level, or providing services that are not provided at all by some of those other municipalities. Because I think you will find that we stack up even better than what it looks like when, when you look at it that way. So I don't know how you'd represent it, whether you'd break, unstack them and have a different graph for each one, so that you could see that, you know, our VADA isn't giving you as much for your dollar in terms of waste diversion, for example. Not that I know, I'm just making that example up. But it'd be great for people to understand that not only are we paying at the low end of rates, or near the low end of rates, but we're getting more value for those rates than other municipalities give. If that's possible, just a suggestion.
I just have one comment. Can you tell on film here what a digester is? As people are watching this, what does this mean to them?
I'm going to mess it up, Bob.
We'll stall for time as Bob comes down.
Okay.
An anaerobic digester is, yes.
It does the same thing your stomach does. That's, that's the quick answer. Solids are generated in the wastewater process, and they can be reduced in mass overall by digestion, and then hauled away at a much lower cost, or land applied, because it's much more stable than if you don't do the digestion process. So it is one of the processes where we have other options, like hauling the liquid, which is much more expensive. Some of the process improvements we need, we don't have other options, and we have to do them because of the regulations.
So it's a garbage disposal?
It's so to speak.
It takes it down to something that my last utility director I worked with, he called it pancake. It's a, it's a really dense material.
It does just what your stomach does, and you can use all your imagination on that.
Thank you very much.
So one of the things I did want to bring out is, so I think on, we need direction on whether to move forward with the, the increase in electric. In terms of the wastewater, you can see the four options here. The, to, to address the question in terms of, how do you, if you look at those that are able to afford it more, or those are more able to afford it, unless you've seen something different, typically what people do is really hit the volume on that side, because that, the volume gives people the ability to deal with that issue. And, and so that would be option one in this case. And so you would almost need to pick a volume increase, or a monthly in a volume increase, that's your first decision point. And then your second decision point is, do you just do the increase, or do you utilize section two, ten-point-two of the charter?
So, this is open to discussion. Do we have any comments from counselors on which one you would prefer? This is a lot of information thrown at us. And I'll start it off, I think that alternative three... I'm having a hard time digesting this all as well, to be quite honest. Okay. Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Could you explain why alternative three appears to be the cheaper option? Mayor Peck, Mayor Potem Rodriguez. So in alternative three, we're making use of council's ability to authorize the issuance of debt without a vote of the public, to pay for capital improvements in that three-year period using debt, so, you know, kind of reducing the overall revenue requirement within that three-year period by six million dollars. So that's, that's what's going on there, is we're decreasing the amount that we're taking in over that period, so it ends up, you know, kind of lower at the end of the three years. Sure, but alternative four also utilizes the same tool, but it's slightly more... Right. So similar to how, so, alternative one is parallel to alternative three, in terms of, like, what the, so you can see how alternative one is slightly lower than alternative two. And then alternative two and four are similarly parallel. And so what we're seeing here is, where all of the increase is happening in the volume increase in, in one and three, it's keeping the overall increase lower for people who are on the lower end of use, so people who are higher users will absorb more of the increase. Okay. Yeah, that clears it, clears it up for me. I believe in the council comment said staff's recommendation was alternative one. Was that not accurate? I do not recall whether we, whether we made a recommendation. Okay. For some reason, I thought it said in the council comment that they recommended options one for both items. Oh. I think, I think we were differentiating between option one, which is, you know, to provide direction to, you know, bring forward changes, and, you know, having that different from the alternatives, which are the rate alternatives. So yes, we think, you know, and option, and option one for, you know, the CARES thing is that we should bring forward changes to the CARES program to include wastewater and to increase the electric rebate. Okay. So then, just a quick follow-up on ten-point-two, in the sense that that is a debt mechanism. What is the repayment term? Is it similar to our normal bond? Yes. So we're talking about twenty-plus, twenty years? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it, it costs you more over time.
Yeah.
It's, just doesn't have the same rate impact.
Hmm. Yeah. It's a tool in the toolbox. Yeah, it's a tool in the toolbox. I'd probably tend towards alternative one personally.
Counselor Waters?
Oops, turned myself off.
You did?
I'm back on now. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, what I heard you say, Harold, in response to my question about some kind of means testing, is that the, the volume is the way you get at that, that, or the approximation of it. So, so option, alternative number two, or anything with volume in it, the, the assumption is, or presumption is, that those who are not stressed by the, the cost here likely are going to pay more for the cost of this, because they're, because they're going to be volume users, right? So the related question for me is, on ten-point-two, how many times do we get to go to the well, or go to the bank? One time, until that debt's serviced?
One time.
So you get one shot, if you got any debt created that way, your hands are tied until you've got that debt serviced. So no council would be able to use ten-point-two in the charter for twenty years, or until the debt's serviced? Is that correct?
I'm looking for, that's what I understand. I'm looking for...
Mayor Peck, Councilmember Waters, my, my understanding is that we could, we could issue additional debt up to that one-half of one percent, and that that would change as the assessed valuation changes as well.
All right, so you have relatively small increments of that, right?
You have margins.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be much. So what is, what's our timeline on this? We need to, you need a decision by when? Tonight? Soon?
Soon.
If you, yeah, if you need additional information, you know, we can come back probably to the next meeting with additional...
I tried. I'm just thinking about, there's this, there's this other conversation on quality of life, and, and how that may be a factor in that one as well, but I, we should, we should not think of this in relationship to other kind of decisions.
No, I think when we talked about this, you know, we, I guess the question is, you know, I said, well, why didn't we, so we're looking at issuing nineteen million dollars of debt in twenty-five, and, and I said, well, what happened here? Well, what happened was, is we had a plan to cash flow.
Yeah.
Inflation and everything else that we've been talking about just hit those projects. So we, we, we had a gap in funding based on the world that we're in, and, and because, you know, we have to have the vote, we can't go to a vote to issue the debt in time for us to get the projects done that we need to, and we put this in to give you all your options.
So, so alternative three has the, the smallest impact on rate payers over the long term, assuming that we, it's not a lot, but it appears to be, in, in these numbers, over the, I know it's small, over the, but over our twenty-year period of time, because that's the length of time we would be issuing or servicing that, the... Because that's the length of time we would be issuing or servicing that, the debt using the charter option.
So Mayor, Mayor Peck, Councilmember Waters, I'd actually say that there's probably a larger impact over the 20-year time period because you're also paying the interest on whatever bonds you've issued. There is a smaller impact to rates in the three-year period because.
Just in terms of what we're seeing here?
Right.
So what does that look like? Can you run that out?
So.
Well, that, so that's, that based on interest rates and whatnot?
It's based on interest rates, you know, it's going to be roughly double. So if we're looking at 6 million, you know, we're paying 12 million over 20 years.
Yeah.
You know, but we're paying one and a half million in this three-year period instead of 6 million.
What do the out years look like for alternative two?
There is no additional rate pressure based on what's included here. There's the, you know, we're covering the debt service requirements for digester number four with this, so.
Boy, it'd be nice to look at what the 2000, when 2025 to '30 or, you know, with, with whatever current interest rates are in order to get an idea of what those cost to ratepayers would be in the years beyond 2025. I was ready to settle on one of these, but now I'm not sure.
Okay.
And we can bring that, we can bring that back to you where you can see it. You know, rule of thumb is when you cash flow, when you cash, when you cash fund it, it is cheaper over time, but you have to hit it really hard in order to generate the cash. And then when you pay it off, that then helps create capacity for other capital projects that you can flow into it. And so it really is, it's more that immediate issue that it hits, but over time, I will say it's, it's a little bit more level versus when you issue the debt, it smoothes you into it, but you're paying it out over a longer term.
Counselor Waters, I mean, I'm sorry, Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. So on the 10.2 issue, I, if the assessed, current assessed valuation of the city is in there, I missed it. So how, how many wishes would we have left if we issued the 10.2 bonds now?
Teeny wish.
Yeah, we modeled this at, using $6 million worth of that capacity and the actual capacity is somewhere in the neighborhood of eight.
Okay, so we don't have much of a wish left. Okay, so that, that makes me against doing it because we could have a bigger emergency in the future.
You could.
Okay, thank you.
So my question is, we are going after any grants, federal funds, et cetera. If we raise these rates now and we get federal funding perhaps for the digester or enough to eliminate the, the total cost of that, how does that affect our rates? Do they stay where they are or do we say, we got money to pay for this therefore? Because I know rates never come down, electric rates, water rates or whatever. And in 2026, we're going to come back for another rate increase, you can bet on it. So that's what's really difficult for me to get my head around sometimes is that we do go out for these funds, but it doesn't affect us if we get them. I mean, I'm sorry, it doesn't affect the residents and their monthly pay.
I think it would affect the long term because you would treat it as a stabilization, you would treat it as stabilization. So as you're moving in with your normal inflationary pressures in the future or other capital projects, let's say you got $5 million to offset a digester. Well, that $5 million carries forward and you can use it on other projects down the road or to absorb some of those inflationary pressures. So it probably lowers future rate increases based on how you're able to do it. I've seen some people reduce them, but then you just end up increasing it over time. And so I would look at it as anything you're able to bring in from a grant fund perspective is you almost treat it as a stabilization into the future so you can minimize future increases that are the result of inflation or other things.
The wastewater utility has benefited from the FEMA funding for flood recovery. I want to say probably about between five and 10 million, probably in the five range of that, you know, overall $55 billion allocation for, for recovery went to the wastewater fund to replace pipes that were damaged and, and things like that. So, so we have seen a benefit, you know, that's kept our rates from having to go up much over the, you know, in the recent past. We've had, we had very small increases in 2018, 19, and 20, no increases in '21 or '22. And, and now because, you know, inflation and, and these other factors have come in, we are needing to, to seek these increases. But then we may look forward to something like that where we have sub-inflation rate increases for a period of time if we are successful in that grant funding search.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I'm not entirely sure what forms stabilization can take. So I was thinking, would an example of minimizing the city's overall indebtedness is an important thing. So if we got that $5 million for the digester in time, we could then lower the amount of the bond issue. That would be an example.
Correct.
That everybody would understand.
Yeah, so if it was 20 million and you got a 5 million grant.
It could be 15 million.
You're going to issue 15 million in debt.
Yeah, okay, thanks. That helps.
And just to say it out loud, that is our plan related to the storm drainage bonds that we're currently seeking is, you know, if we are successful in receiving FEMA funding for that project, we would reduce the bond issuance. We would not, you know, continue with the bond issuance and, you know, do something different.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
So you do want direction on this tonight. So let's go with each counselor and tell what it is you're thinking. I can see that there's, with the questions, that there's a lot of, oh, there's just a lot of questions about how we should do this and how we educate the public on doing it So Counselor Yarborough, we haven't heard from you.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Well, I had to get confused and get unfused now and get confused again. So what I see, what I think personally from listening to all the conversation, that alternative number one will be the most equitable decision. The volume increase will be where, you know, our residents will use, whatever they use, that's what they pay and hopefully they make good decisions and, you know, look at their bills and say, oh, I could turn, you know, my water off instead of just letting it run or whatever. For me, it would be alternative one. That's my perspective because alternative two is also increasing not just volume, but an extra monthly increase, right? Is that correct?
Mayor Peck, Councilmember Yarborough, that is correct, but we are proposing to offset the increase in that monthly service charge by including that in the CARES rebate. So a little from column A, a little from column B.
It, it goes to the point earlier, it's more those on the margins. Your point applies on, so if you're just above the threshold to get, to receive CARES funds, your point applies on, on alternative one. Is that correct, Becky?
That is correct. And we do still have the option to implement the CARES rebates at the amounts that we've proposed regardless of the option selected.
Yep.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim.
I think I did state earlier that my preference is alternative one for basically what was just stated about the folks on the margins and the monthly service charge, the folks that do not qualify for the CARES rebate. So it still is alternative one.
Counselor Martin.
I agree. I think option one is the most equitable and thriftiest in the long term.
Counselor Waters.
Just, let me just clarify. All these are predicated on the, all these rates or the costs are predicated on a successful bond question in 2024. What are the, where do we stand in, at this time in 2025 if that, or in 2024, in December of 2024, if it fails?
Mayor Peck, Councilmember Waters, as, as with any financial plan, you know, yes, moving forward without that, that bond in place would require recalculation or changing the, the project plan, you know, the capital plan that it was funded.
So, so the council, these council members in 2026, 20, in the fall of 2024 will be looking at a different set of rate recommendations if a bond election fails.
Most likely.
For digester number four.
Bob is just coming in to say, you know, that the, the costs would shift into your operating budget, which would require a, a lower but still an additional probably rate increase.
Or we would look at running it again in '25 and.
Yeah.
Fill in the gaps, understanding what people's issues were. But it would either have to run again in '25 or we'd have to dump it in operations.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I agree with alternative one, given everything we've learned and not tying the city's hands or the, and future council's hands on, do whatever they might want to do with 10.2 in the charter, so.
Thank you, everybody. So your direction is alternative one.
And do we have direction on the electric utility to bring that back with the increases that Brian talked about?
Thumbs up or down?
And direction on the CARES program.
Both.
Gotcha.
Great. We'll bring you ordinances. Thank you very much.
I, when my kids were at home, I would yell at them about their links with their showers.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I think we already let all the people go, but these are actually, even though this is wastewater, it's based on people's water meter consumption flow, right?
The winter monthly averaging.
Yeah. And so, you know, the city is simultaneously doing things to encourage people to reduce their water consumption, like there's a zero-scape incentive program going on. Are we going to cut off our noses to spite our face by, what happens if the city really gets into water use reduction?
So it's December, January, and February, right? Or am I mixing a different place?
November, Jan, November, December, January usage as billed up December, January.
February.
Okay, so probably won't make much difference.
No, because most outdoor irrigation, you're, you've already blown your sprinklers and you're not able to do it, so.
I, I will say, due to changing temperatures, we are seeing more irrigation in those months than we have expected in the past.
But that works in the favor of funding these issues.
Yes, yes. But, but you're right, overall declining usage and, you know, you know, lower use fixtures and things like that do, do affect the billable volume here. So, you know, that's also a little bit of a part of the increase in the volumetric charges.
Okay, thank you.
So we're back to the agenda and it's the mayor and council comments. Do we have any comments from anyone? I think we made a lot of comments tonight. Actually, I do have a comment in that we are having the, we all got the email about the Northern Arapaho anniversary. So anybody who wants to go up to Wyoming in October, I'll have to pull up that date, but we do have it on our emails. So it's over the weekend. It's only going to be two days actually, I think. So you can email that lady who's raising her hand back there, Sandy Cedar, if you would like to go. City manager, Harold, do you have any comments? None?
I'll answer mayor and council.
City attorney, Eugene?
Mayor and council, the fun is just beginning. Just want to remind you, we are going to continue the public meeting to go into executive session to talk about gun safety ordinances. So I'll see you over in the study session room.
Okay. So can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
May I have a motion to continue?
And a motion to continue an executive, reconvene in an executive session.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Counselor Martin, a second by Mayor Pro, Pro Tim Rodriguez to adjourn the city council meeting and reconvene in an executive session about gun safety.
So you just do a hand raise.
Yes, all those in favor, raise your hand.